Okay.
Making each decision, keep the taxes as low as possible, expenses as low as possible. Lots of needs to consider.
Allegiance to flag United States of America, to the Republic where we sustain, one nation, under God, indivisible, and infinite in essence, is our.
Build the next layer on legend preparatory process. And I have Elizabeth.
Turn that off. Two head three. We're thin now. He put the batteries in.
How do you want mine?
If you turn that off completely.
You get rid of the noise.
Well, we're gonna have to have some amplification of some sort.
Hi, I'm Elizabeth Flowers, I'm a lifelong resident of Titus County, and I really appreciate this opportunity. I wanted to address the salary increases that y'all discussed last week. What I heard from most of testimony from the other department elected officials, that they wanted the increase for their departmental employees only, and not for themselves. And the only ones that really wanted the $1,200 across the board for elected officials and hourly employees were the county commissioners. So I would like you to really think about that. If you can't make it off of your salaries at $55,000, $56,000 a year, at our age, you're doing something seriously wrong. So think about your hourly employees, their expenses are a little higher, cost a little more for them to live. The other issue I had is the Commissioner's Road Report. And I look at it this way, when you buy a piece of property, you have to have road access. That's your number one thing, you have to have access to your property. And as Titus County population increases, more and more people are having to use those roads. You can take double the city population, and that's pretty much what's out in the county. So we use those county roads every day. And I don't think, very rarely did I ever see road crews on any of those fixing the roads. I know some of the roads, because of creek or drainage runoff, are a little harder to maintain. But I would ask the Commissioner's Court to really, really be frugal and prudent in what roads that they're gonna put for maintenance this year. We have to have access. And I just want y'all to kind of remember that, that's what the Commissioner's Road Report is, for to let the public know what roads are gonna be working on this year. And that's it. I appreciate y'all, thank you.
All right. What'd you do to keep it quiet?
I guess I gotta sit over and do it. I'll sit right here.
That's good.
Do you want me to turn this to my phone? You can just talk last.
Sheriff, you're here, you have anything you wanna say, you just listen in?
Yeah, if we do give elected official pay raise, I will mind. See right now, I work hard, I've got a lot of responsibility, so I will take one if it's offered. I've went several years without one, I've actually turned them down before, but yeah, I appreciate anything that we can do, because we gotta make a living just like the hourly people, and our jobs are sometimes just as hard or harder. But yeah, I do think we need to just keep in mind the hourly people, and I think you guys are. So that is probably the most important thing, I agree, is to keep these hourly people, and more especially my jail, that's why I went hurt, and I think you guys are considering that, so.
Thank you.
Judge, let me ask you something.
You may.
Sheriff and I worked over his budget, yeah, when we sent the budget worksheet out, that was made between the day, because we looked at his just yesterday, and he is going to need an increase in inmate medical, where we pay, and that's not the federal prisoners, it's the prisoners that we have, we're gonna have to increase that by about $2,000, is what our estimate is. He has one inmate that I've had, I started now, and we didn't manage to pay rates on those, isn't that right? Yeah, we didn't manage to pay rates on those, but we are already at this year's budget. So I just wanted to bring that to you, just to make that clear, that only, that's a number that we didn't realize how quickly it was gonna go up in the last thirty days.
Okay. The federal prisoners, there any expenses related to them are paid by the feds?
Yes.
Okay. That's good. Do you think before the year is out, Barbara, that we'll need to make an adjustment to the budget?
Yes.
But you're talking about not that, you're talking about increasing next year's budget?
Next year's budget. And I and he are working on, she's looking at other things, so we get all those together at one time. He's got a few other, he has money within his budget to cover those, but it's totally different, and we're gonna need a budget.
Okay, very good. All right, but if you think that that's an accurate, I mean, if you think that's a reasonable estimate for next year, I think we should do that, we don't wanna be stuck again. All right. One of the topics, obviously, is going to be pay raises, and along with that, we've talked about across-the-board pay raises, we'll talk about how much you wanna do there. You had some specific requests within departments for increases either in across-the-board jail pay from the sheriff, or particular individuals within departments that have made a request on behalf of themselves, like Ray Barrett, or on behalf of the district judge, and he's given us a memo here that we'll certainly read and consider. So if you wanna start off with specific requests, we can do that. If you wanna start off talking about across-the-board, you know, Barbara did provide you with that worksheet, if I can find mine. And just as a refresher, we had talked about, and it sounded like the consensus the other day, was a $1,200 raise across the board, which would include elected officials, and would include all full-time employees. That would result in an increase of $166,320 plus payroll taxes and benefits to the tune of about 21%. Apparently, one of you has asked Barbara to give another option, an option number eight, that's an increase of $1,200 for all elected officials, $1,500 for other full-time employees. That amounts to about 72 cents per hour for other employees. The cost goes from $166,000 up to $203,000 with a move like that. Just in review, looking, but this would be the first raise in three years, is that correct?
Ten, one, eighteen.
Yes.
Okay. All right, so Dana, I think that was yours, Flor is yours, if you'd like to address that.
That was the, like, I've been looking at, it's been three years, believe, they had a member raise, and I think the last time they did have a raise, I think they changed it to like, a lot of demand, and that's, we kinda wondered, why should pass through enough records? It's like, they do work hard, and they, you know, we're out there, off of the night, and it's going, we're there, and back this past week, it was one of the very, uh, rain days, we had a blue on tree, and I think it was Monday or Tuesday this morning, it was out, it was six thirty, seven o'clock, and I'll take that after, it was warm, so my hands was there, so, you know, I said, it's a three-year deal, they've had a raise, they've had a loss, they've had a raise, they've had a, it's not hard to swallow, you know, you look at your, getting the town anyway, whenever one of them deserves a raise.
In my opinion, whether you go with $1,200 or $1,500, either one of those, you're not even giving them a cost of living raise in the last three years. You know, if you were to compare a cost of living three years ago and now, it's certainly gone up more than that, so either one of these is not quite yet in step. Anyone else have any comments on this particular subject? Sounds like you're in support of option number eight to me. Again, we can, we can talk about these other payroll-related subjects, circle back around to this, if you wanna nail this one down first. We just need to make some decisions today. I'd really like to leave this meeting today and have salary decisions made, so that that's not hanging out there. You know, as each day goes on, it makes it more difficult for you to, you know, to remember the subject matter that was talked about here while it's fresh on your mind. I think this is a very reasonable, you know, where we were the other day, $1,200, I, actually, I think it's less than reasonable, I think reasonable would be more than this. I do think that this is an appropriate move, and I would like to see us start making steady moves each year, perhaps not of this magnitude, rather than feeling like we have to play catch-up. And then every time you have to play catch-up, you find yourselves not really giving the appropriate size raise, because you don't feel like you can increase it. So I will support option seven, I'll support option eight, if that's the majority, I just soon weigh in on this decision.
Okay. Hey, I like, I'll go with option seven, and of course, I'm not gonna take the raise, so.
Let me ask you this, when you say you're not going to take the raise, would you ask that the budget line item for your pay in your precinct be allowed to rise along with these others, and you just tell Barbara to hold the line on mine and don't, don't spend my entire budget? That puts things out of balance, and it makes it difficult, we have dealt with that in the past, you know, and I did that one year, but that was just, it only, it only impacted my department.
Yeah, not really, I mean, I'm already ahead of a couple of guys. Me and Dana make a thousand dollars more than the other two commissioners, I believe, 'cause somewhere down the line, somebody took a raise, you know, so I wouldn't do that, I'd just leave it like it is, let a commissioner that's for his precinct pay herself how he wants to, you know, really, that's pretty easy, he could give himself a bigger raise if he wanted to someday, but for now, I wouldn't.
So you're in support of option number seven?
Mm-hmm.
All right. Jeff, Jimmy, any comments, thoughts?
I go with option number seven as well.
I kinda like option eight, so.
They had, they had a raise, they had a raise in three years, of course, I had a raise, I had took a raise, and something in four years, he's got the length and all that, but it took four years, I go another two years this year, so this, I agree, it still did that.
Well, it sounds like the vote's left to me, I'm gonna go with option eight, so with your approval. I thought about this too, and again, I think that even $1,500 does not keep us up with the cost of living. So as it stands right now, and I believe if this is, if y'all are set on this, let's, let's stick with this, I mean, we can always make changes up until the last minute, but as far as the work that we're asking Barbara to do, and it's a lot of work to plug all these figures in, I will support option eight, as well as Commissioners three and four, so Barbara, for now, let's go with option eight. And if Commissioner Fitch chooses to do that, just hold the line on his, that's certainly his option. All right, we've got some individual discussions here, why don't we start with the memo that has been provided by Judge Ralston, and I'd like to read that into the record. This is guarding his budget request for the District Court. Gentlemen, please accept this letter as a formal request for additional staff for the 76, 276 Judicial District Courts for the new budget year. We apologize for not being able to address you in person, we have hearings that were already set prior to our having been given notice that this would be your last day of budget workshop. Unfortunately, we're not able to fully address all issues and requests during our allotted time slot. Over the past year, COVID has made many changes to the way we do court. In one way, we were stalled, in others, we were busier than ever. We were given many new state mandated requirements by OCA and the Texas Supreme Court, such as making COVID policies for every aspect of our court, and scheduling and operating Zoom hearings. While it may have appeared that court slowed down, in reality, the only thing slowing down was as to jury trials. The court needs a court coordinator. Ken Wilson has been filling in for this position, as well as his bailiff duties during the past year, in helping us draft the policies, doing all of our scheduling for both courts, and administering the Zoom meetings. In our opinion, this is too much for one person to do, especially now that we're required to use all reasonable efforts to do both in-person and Zoom court. All surrounding courts have added court coordinators all along, prior to COVID. We respectfully request that you provide a new position of court coordinator. Prior to requesting an in, pay increase for Mr. Wilson, we asked Barbara to research pay for a court coordinator. Her research indicated that estimated pay for a court coordinator would be $32,000 a year, with benefits, would be an increase to the county of $50,000 for a new staff position. Additionally, requesting that you increase the number of hours for the part-time bailiff position, making it a full-time position. As has been stated to you by not only us, but also the DA and district clerk, we will be having a significant increase in court cases and trials. We must have at least one bailiff in court, and a second bailiff at the metal detectors doing required COVID screens. Excuse me. It was our intention to ask for this during the course of our initial meeting, but we ran out of time. The auditor has calculated the cost to be a total increase of $25,000. Thank you for your consideration on these requests, it's imperative for the safety of the community that our office and courts are fully staffed and operational, we appreciate your time and consideration. You know, I wish I could ask some more questions here, I don't know if Ken Wilson is functioning as the court coordinator, what will be his, what will be his duties if we hire a full-time court coordinator? And I'm sure, I guess he's being utilized fully as the bailiff in all of the hearings, I assume that that will continue. And I don't know if that means his court coordination duties would be then transferred. You know, at the initial request, we were asking for a $6,000 raise for that position, which was more in keeping with what somebody should be paid to do both of those duties. So, you know, I don't know what's, what has resulted in this, perhaps, you know, our indication that we were going to be hesitant to cherry pick and give this, this much of a raise. So maybe this is something that we need to consider and talk more with the judges. I'm hesitant to make a decision on this today without having a chance to talk to them, and so perhaps we can find another time to talk. Now, maybe y'all have your minds made up, I don't know, this, this is news to me here about hiring a court coordinator in addition, you know, layering on another job, so we're the, I don't recall there being a, was there originally a request for an increase in bailiff pay, part-time bailiff pay on their original budget request?
Well, on, on what, Judge Ralston Ross, y'all have forgotten, but he had me prepare something for him on June 7th, and I believe he was of the understanding that I could send that to y'all at that time, I did not do that, and that included the full-time court administrator staff, the new position that they're progressing today, the part-time bailiff, the increase in pay for our prisoners, those are the three things that were on there. Again, I believe that he thought I could send that to you, but he did not include that in his, supposedly, because we thought y'all already had it. When I did that research on June 6th and 7th, I also had to check other counties, to see what, what kind of staff they had in those counties. In Hopkins County, they have one and a half full courtervs, and the half is a new part-time position, they had one full-time position for eight years, along with two full-time bailiffs. In Bowie County, each judge has a court coordinator and a bailiff, there's also a staff attorney position to do research and assist as your judge. In LaBarre County, each judge has a court coordinator and a bailiff. Cass County has a part-time bailiff, who's also a precinct constable. Court coordinator duties are shared with one position, that is, that is a shared position between the district judge and the county court of law. Forest County has one court coordinator and one office staff person, and the bailiff is shared between the district and the county court. Exeter County, there's five district courts in Exeter County, they're much larger, each one has court administrator and a bailiff. Cook County has one and a half full courterv positions, and the half position was just increased this year, more for this stuff coming here.
You know, and I'm, the functions of, of the district court, as far as their administrative needs is foreign to me, I don't, I don't have any idea, for me to, to question what a district judge says as far as their needs, I'm not equipped to do that. So I, I want some further explanation, do we indeed need additional staff, or do we just need a big raise for the existing staff? There's a big difference, in my opinion, and in this case, I don't feel that it's proper to cherry pick and give a substantial raise like that. If we need a court coordinator in addition, that's fine, if that makes an adjustment to the pay of the existing bailiff, because there's no longer court coordination duties, I'd like to hear more about that, I certainly want to be fair in this matter, and I think we need to keep up with the times with our district court, and they are going to be busier, I understand that, and I believe that, long-term, I don't know, once we get through this backlog, what's it going to settle back down to? So is there a way we can incrementally step this up? Can we hire a part-time bailiff rather than another full-time? I don't know. So I'm not prepared to, to make this decision today without some additional discussion.
I thought Ken was gonna do both jobs, and they were asking for $6,000 for a raise for him, and he would keep, 'cause he does both jobs now, so he was gonna stay the coordinator, 'cause they like him as coordinator, and he was still gonna bailiff, and that was gonna cost us $6,000, instead of hiring a $50,000 employee, that's what I, that's what I took from it. And then, I understood that they were gonna need, Woody was gonna do more hours, so he's part-time, was he gonna go full-time, part-time, were you, I thought he kinda did that now, he's year-round, part-time?
He's year-round, part-time.
'Cause he's there year-round.
He's supposed to work less than 29 hours a week, one week, he's working, he works 41 hours, but some weeks he works less than 29, so it comes out, it balances itself out. My understanding is that it's required that they have a bailiff in every court, and someone to run that, you know, checking there, so that's the reason why they were asking for him to go to full-time. Now, Judge Ralston told me, you know, if they don't need a bailiff, have him come, but they need the budget to support that in the event they are having trial, you know, so we need to increase that portion if you as needed. Now, he gets a retiree, so, so we save some money on that with regard to, you know, some of the benefits that go on, because we're already paying for that.
So the, the way that we're getting the calculated total increase is because that now throws him into full-time, and therefore, he would be eligible for benefits in the way of insurance and retirement.
As a retiree, we're already paying for that.
That's right.
Which is great, all of it.
Okay.
So we got no new costs related.
So at least, approximately $12,000 of that 25 is for the addition of health insurance.
No, he has it, he has insurance.
Oh, as a retiree, I missed that, okay. Well, why, why would going from a part-time to a full-time cost us $25,000?
Maybe if they get somebody new, maybe.
No, he's, he's, he's asking that you make the part-time bailiff a full-time position, it seems to me we'd be going from 25 hours to 40 hours.
Well, if you have, Judge, the other thing that's in here is also an increase for this bailiff, or his position, to $25 an hour, he's currently paying less than that.
Okay, Woody?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So a step up in that pay for full-time, all right? And what, what does that require?
Both of the, both of the bailiffs would then be at $25 an hour.
Who's our other bailiff?
Ken.
Well, who's, who's the, okay, Ken, all right.
He does both, yeah.
Okay.
If we don't, if we don't provide those, and they're $25 an hour, if we just did $1,200, then that amount will come down significantly. I think that's what your question was. On a full-time, uh, court administrator staff. On a full-time court administrator staff, the estimate that I had was based on the district attorney, legal secretaries, and the head of state. I just chose a number. About $25 an hour. And that position would require, you know, all the payroll that I did.
We need to talk to them, make sure we're going to use Ken for both jobs with a raise. And then we already know about Woody needing to go full-time, so. Versus giving Ken a raise, Woody a raise, and hiring a full-time bailiff or coordinator, whichever one Kenny don't want to take, Ken. So we've got a few answers there we need to get.
Any other comments, thoughts on this?
I think we need some more information before we go.
Okay.
I need to answer a few questions, I suppose.
My understanding is that hopefully he doesn't have one or two, or five, or six.
Yeah, I'm sure, I'm sure that's the reason. Okay. Let's move on to the next subject. I need to take this call real quickly. There the man we need, right there. You must have ESP.
Well, I think I have some questions for you.
Where are you getting them?
I have some questions for you, Judge, we need to step out. Someone should walk in with the right numbers.
Okay, good.
They all have comments. I didn't even get to the Pindles. And here's any questions that I would like to bring to you, the outlay. A court administrator staff, blue and white, full-time, part-time, and a retired hyper.
Michigan. It's true. Oh, very good.
There we go.
Great, thank you. We were about to pass over this because we felt like we needed some additional information. And let's get you to a mic somehow, some way, somewhere.
Okay, first of all, I want to appreciate Barbara, you know, getting this thing up. Judge Sossier drafted the letter. So what, first of all, what can I answer? I think the letter's pretty well self-explanatory.
Where, where we were at the other day, we understood you were simply asking for no additional personnel, but an increase in pay. Is that not accurate?
Yes.
Okay. Tell us what's changed.
Well, you know, I think that the idea of a court coordinator came up at the meeting. I believe somebody asked about that. And so they got us kind of talking about it, thinking about it, and it would help a lot. Because, you know, the court coordinator would then take a lot of load off of Mr. Wilson and would be a person who would set cases for us throughout three counties plus Marion County with me, that's four counties. And that's kind of why we want y'all to consider that. Because, you know, Ken, quite frankly, you know, he's, he's, we're, he's overworked. His primary job is to sit back there and provide security for the courthouse. And, you know, he provides security for the whole courthouse. And so also if, you know, we, as I mentioned to you, there's some of these places we go and some counties, they've got a bailiff down there the whole time. Marion County does. You know, they've got a bailiff on duty. We go through the deal, you know, and all that kind of stuff and court's going on. And they take care of everybody in that business for security of the whole courthouse. And then when we have court, they bring in more folks. And so that's kind of where we're coming from. I, I don't want to be put in a position where, you know, we're wearing Ken out and he can't focus on first primary, primary objective is, of course, to keep security of the courthouse. And so if we can take that load off of him trying to be our secretary and court coordinator, that's going to make his job a lot easier and also make us function a lot better setting cases and so forth. And, you know, like I mentioned to you, we're going to start having a lot of trials. People are waking up and they're getting ready to go.
He's your first line of defense for entry into the courthouse?
First line of defense is that front door you walk into. You walk in there and there's a metal detector there. And so generally, there's nobody there unless we're actually holding court. Unless CPS is there, the AG is there, then we bring in part-time. All y'all got to do is go down to Upstate County.
But any, anytime that there's going to be court hearings going on, we will have somebody at the front door?
Yes. I would hope so. Of course, that puts a burden on the sheriff. I mean, he's got, you know, he doesn't have enough folks to do his part of the work.
Well, let's talk, talk about that for a minute. You say you would hope so. Would, if we relieve Ken of the court reporter duties, will he have time to be there at that front desk if there is something going on, some kind of hearing going on?
Yes, he'll be in court. I mean, he provides security for the AG, for CPS courts.
Any, any court?
Any court, any, any activity that takes place over there in that, in the annex, he provides security for the judge or magistrate who's over there. That's what he does.
And Woody will be at the door?
And Woody will be at the door. Now, understand Woody sometimes has got, he's, he's part-time, I believe, because he doesn't work full-time. And is he a reserve? Yeah, he's part, he's part-time. And quite frankly now, you know, his wife has issues with regard to health. That's his first problem. Because he's going to take care of his wife. And, you know, circumstances come up, he's got to be, then we have to call the sheriff and ask the sheriff if he'll, you know, send somebody over. And sometimes I don't know whether he can or whether he can't.
How often is that an issue?
Pardon?
How often is that an issue?
Oh, the good news is it hadn't come up very often at all when Woody's had to, couldn't be there. He is really, really good guy and he comes.
Okay. The court, court, tell us a little more about a court coordinator. We're not familiar with that. I mean, I know the term and I know they exist, but tell us what.
What they do.
Where would they office? What would their hours be? Do they need to be full-time?
Okay, well, they're going to be, they're going to be a full-time job. And we got a place for them, as you know, well, you know, we've, we've mentioned this to you, since David Colly's getting his office, we're going to have his old office there. And Judge Sossier wants to put her office down there where David Colly's office is, which will work good because it's good security. She can, you know, shut off that outside door and get that handled. A court coordinator, we could put them back there in the office where Judge Sossier is, which is a one-room affair just right off the courtroom.
Ken's going to stay right where he's active, all those cameras and.
Ken's going to stay right there because he has to monitor those cameras, you know, like he sees what's going on, every office, every aspect. That's right. That's his number one priority is courthouse security and that's what he does. And that's part of it, watching those cameras.
And his job as court coordinator never causes him to not be able to function as a bailiff? Under the existing circumstances right now, in other words, you, he never defers to, sorry, I got to sit back here at my desk today, sorry, I can't.
Of course not, of course not. His number one priority.
Like you said, that's his number one priority and then he'll figure out.
Courthouse security.
He'll coordinate court cases when he has available time.
Yeah, but see, if we have a trial going on, Ken's not going to be there. And so if somebody wants to get a hold of one of us, try to set a case, well, we'll have to get back to you.
It'd be good to train somebody to.
Yes.
Okay. And the court coordinator job, we think is going to cost what?
I think Barbara, what, 32 to 40,000?
$15 an hour is what we said.
Yeah.
So this is primarily a clerical position? In other words, describe the ideal kind of person here. Does it need to be a law enforcement?
I would want someone who'd have to be able to drive a computer well.
Yeah.
Be able to write letters for us. You know, kind of like beyond just a mere clerical. I don't know what a clerical person is, but you know.
Well, what I was getting at is do they need to be carrying a gun and be trained in security issues so that they can supplement?
No, no, I don't think so. I mean, I, that's my opinion, of course. I wouldn't necessarily have a whole bunch of folks running around over there with firearms.
Well, I mean, right now you have the benefit of having a court coordinator that's multifaceted. He can man the door, he can carry a gun, he's got basic.
You bet you.
He's got basic training. We don't really need that caliber of person in this position.
No, I don't, we don't need a law enforcement type person.
That sounds reasonable to me.
Yeah. I mean, we're talking about basically, my concept is you got somebody there who's kind of like a, a legal secretary. And I don't care whether it's a man or a woman, it really doesn't make any difference to us.
Okay, all right. And Barbara, you think that's about a 15-hour person? That'll put a total, a total budget increase of about 40? Did that include benefits?
$30,000 with benefits.
50 with benefits? Well, I, I would probably, I would have to agree that you've got to be one of the only district courts that doesn't have a court coordinator. I mean, yeah, you've got Ken that's functioning in that capacity, but it's probably time to take the next step.
And, you know, like we mentioned to you before, you know, I see this, this COVID thing is wearing out, people won't have trials and we're gearing it up. And the district attorney wants to have trials and we're going to accommodate them. Okay, as y'all move through your, I'm sorry.
I support this new position. I had mixed feelings there. I, I understand more about what the needs are and it sounds to me like we're kind of operating on a shoestring right now and have been maybe for some time. I appreciate y'all holding the line. There comes a point in all things where it's time to step up. I support this. I support the full-time bailiff situation. I want security over there. That's my prior, one of my priorities, not necessarily the only priority, but I want that, you know, we've created hopefully an environment over there where you've only got one way in and one way out. We've plugged the holes that used to allow people to come in and out. So that's one positive move we've made there. I'd still like to see increased security in that building. And I think if Ken can focus only on security, that will be a positive thing for us.
Okay. If something comes up, if y'all think of something, call me because I'm going to be always there this morning and working on my queue and doing such things as that.
All right. Do you have any questions about this subject? You've got him right here and it's going to be tough to get him back.
Well, not just, I wouldn't have been here except for the fact that Marion County got resolved, so anyway, I appreciate it.
Good. Thank you. Any comments on this subject? So, you know, I kind of need to know how you feel. Barbara kind of needs to know how you feel. You know, this is a significant tack-on to that budget. We're creating a new position here. I think it's justified.
Yeah, I think it's a good one.
I don't, I don't know any other district courts that don't have a court coordinator, if not more. And I do want Ken to focus. If his primary job is security, I want him to be able to function on that. And I do know that they're, they are going to be busier over there. We've got an aggressive new young DA and an assistant DA in a new office with two support personnel over there. You've heard the same thing from the district clerk. I believe we've come to the year where we need to step things up in the district court. And now that I have a better understanding, I was hesitant at first, but I support this. Well, that's correct. For that position, there would be the standard raise if we both add in across the board and that would, you know, that doesn't necessarily apply to this new position, not, excuse me, this conversion of a part-time to a full-time position. If Woody is that person, you know, that salary can be set at the beginning of the budget year. So there wouldn't be an increase on top of what we did there. And I'm assuming that that part-time position, that would start at the beginning of the budget year and not right now. You know, so that, that budget line would begin. And maybe there, maybe there's probably going to be a differential between Ken's salary and Woody's. I don't know. I guess I should have asked him about that.
It's going to be the same, wouldn't it?
Well, what I put together for you was the same because Judge Lawson asked me to have what the highest paid deputy was. Highest paid deputy was $25.18.
Would you, would you talk to him about that if you can and let him get back to you and just say, my concern is, here we have an opportunity to bring, to, to bring this person up to a full-time position. Do we want to bring them all the way up to a guy that's been over there now for 12 years? Sometimes that creates problems and I don't feel like we're obligated to do that. But that's not, I don't know enough about the situation. I would just like him to think about that a little more before we lock those in. While Sheriff's here, you've heard Sheriff's request that he feels like his jail staff is somewhat behind the times and, you know, we, we don't like to cherry pick. Here, we're not cherry picking a particular individual. We're looking at the overall scope and considering the totality of the circumstances, as they say. Sheriff, you want to address this issue some more just to kind of refresh our memory on why you feel that there is a need to, to focus on jail? Is that still your opinion?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, and two, you've got to remember the jail, the jail staff has a very important job because realistically, if you look at the chance for lawsuits, they're probably actually more to get us than one than patrol is. So what they do, getting, getting good people in there is important. And we're going to have to pay them to keep good people and get good people in there. And two, these guys, you know, while all the other offices, including myself, is at home for Christmas with my wife and kids, unless something happens that I'm not working, these men and women are in there around the clock, they can't shut down. Holidays, nights, it don't matter. COVID, we're still there, right in the middle of it. They're, they're putting, you know, sometimes it's pretty, you know, the, the whole atmosphere back then in jail sometimes is just not the best in the world, what most people, because, you know, you, I've had people, well, you know, your, your jailers don't need to make more money. Then you can ask them, well, then why don't you come and work for what they're paid? Well, no, no, they won't do it. I mean, so, yeah, most people won't work. Even, even with a dollar an hour I'm asking for, they wouldn't do it for that and come in there in that, in that circumstance. They'll say in a heartbeat, well, no, I'm not made for that. I mean, so, yeah, I think it's, I'd like to see them get more, but I know realistically we can't do that because there's only so much because we get from the taxpayers. But I think it would be fair to them and help me keep some help and, you know, and help keep things going smoothly in the jail.
Give us an idea on typical spec, the spectrum of jail pay from what to what? Rate, what's their rates?
Right now it's 13.63 an hour starting out. That's why I was asking.
Start out, that's the lowest of the lows, starts at 13.63?
Yeah, and do you have that, Barbara?
Yeah, and based on your step pay arrangement, that, that goes up as high as what?
Right now, I think it goes up to. Yeah, we've got it here. Hold on to say, we've, we've got it here.
Yeah, 13.63. It increases after one year to 13.83. And years two before is 14.33. And with five more years, it's $14.11. dollars and sixty-three cents. And there's a lot of increase after that, unless they live into four minutes.
So it's not, it's not really that big of a increase.
And, and hearing what we've decided, at least what we're thinking right now, fifteen-hundred-dollar increase, that worked out to be seventy-two cents, would that?
The sheriff has asked for seventy-five cents on the other office, all of the positions except the judge.
Can you ask for, ask for a dollar there? What would y'all think about doing that? That would take it from, that would be another third or another five hundred dollars, if I'm doing the math right, take it up to about two thousand dollar a year increase. Barbara?
A two thousand dollar a year increase with a, okay, there's thirty-one positions in jail.
Well, just talk, just talking about individually, be about a two thousand dollar annual increase as compared to fifteen hundred, two thousand hour, two thousand hour work here at a dollar an hour. What do you, you don't want to think about that? Sheriff, you know, we're always faced with the problem of favor, more favorable treatment, because everybody feels like their employees are the most important, and they all are important, but we tend to get, we tend to get close to our own staff, because we think and believe that they're justified, and we have a hard time understanding, well, why should they get it? Well, I, I understand jail, jail's a little different situation.
Yeah, because I'm not asking that from my whole staff, I'm just asking that for one group myself, and I, you know.
This will help you keep your staff, and we have reasonable expectation that your federal prisoners will continue for the near future?
Oh, yeah. Yes, sir.
Do you see any reason why that might be ratcheted back any, anytime?
Not even half a cent, no.
I, I could support that. Yep. It's busy, busy over there. We still need a few more folks hired over there, it's busy.
Yeah, finding help right now is an issue. So I'm hoping that, that the pay raise would help us get some, get some folks in that want to work. But like I say, I think, I believe that's probably everywhere, with all this free money being thrown out, it's like people don't want to work anymore, it's sad.
Do you feel like you can justify, I mean, let us know, do you feel like you can justify this in your mind and be able to defend your, your decision if you were to support this? You've got other staff, you've got your own staff to contend with, you've got other departments, you've got the taxpayers, even more important, which you've got to be able to explain this to. Can you do that and justify this kind of a raise?
Who are you asking me, all of you?
I think so, especially with all the feds that we're doing with the jail. I mean, we're using every inch of that jail, so it's helping the county.
It's a little intimidating, isn't it? It's a little intimidating in there.
Sounds like you've got support here for that. Of course, final decisions aren't made till later, but we're trying to make some, what I believe will be the final decisions on payroll today. It sounds like you've heard fifteen hundred dollar across-the-board raise, and it sounds like these guys are willing to go an additional thirty-three percent increase for your jail staff only, so that'll, that'll adjust your step pay in all your positions in the jail.
Yes, sir.
I don't recall you having any other payroll issues.
No, sir.
Well, you do a lot with what you've got, and I know you, you know, just keeping pace with the city of Mount Pleasant is probably impossible. So the better work environment you can produce over there, and, and with a little bit of pay, hopefully you can keep the staff, not have to be continually training and dealing with quitting and calling off and internal theft, and we deal with all kinds of stuff over there.
Thank you.
Okay.
Sir, thank you. Ken?
Uh, what other, okay, Ray Barrett had made a special request that you consider increasing his pay related to his position as the, the mental health officer. And as a reminder, he's the one that, that does deal with our mental health patients. He transports them when needed from a home or what other environment they're in at first to the emergency room, but he's also responsible for making transports to Terrell and to other, occasionally a private hospital. Don't know what your thoughts are about that, but I'm just bringing that up, because he asked for it.
I'm not for it, because I see it's been reduced every year for five or six years. He showed us that on that chart. So I just leave it as it is, and looks like he'll probably be getting a raise if he accepts the raise, you know, for his own self, so. Go with that. But for the mental health officer, no.
Any other thoughts or comments on that?
They would literally like to be as, if they're raised, they can be.
All right with that? Barbara, am I forgetting any other, do any discussion we need to have about any other departments?
The DA officer, you know, we budgeted for five months, we're going to need to increase that for the whole year. Let's see, the tax office, Melissa Stevens' sister works in the tax office, so when you make your motion, we need to make sure she.
Yeah, that's right, that's right.
She does not, she is not allowed to, to consider or recommend a raise.
She can't recommend, it's, it's okay that her sister works here, because she was there when Melissa was voted into office. That's not the issue, that's not a problem, she can continue to work there. But when raises are considered, Melissa cannot recommend a raise for, for her sister due to the, what's that fancy word called? Nepotism laws, thank you, sir. And so that will be something that we will have to specifically state there, and...
And in her office, she had requested an increase of six thousand eight hundred and eighteen dollars. And if we do the fifty-eight cents an hour raise, which now you're talking about the seventy-two cents an hour raise, that would come to ninety-six hundred and fifty-one dollars. So she's actually, she actually requested less than what y'all determined that your planning option pays. So the request at this time, she does not, she wants to allow you to make whatever decision you make on her sister, and for her to take the rest of those funds and bring those staff members where their salary, their salary is, their equity there.
I, I would certainly, I would certainly say that we support her sister getting a raise. So whether it's now or whether it's later, I would make that specific situation clear that we, we recommend and authorize and approve a raise of the same type to her sister, who is in a unique situation there with nepotism laws. I don't, I don't remember any other payroll-related special situations.
Maybe a part-time and auditors?
We talked about.
Yeah, we talked about that.
Relate to this?
Well, it does, you know, Judge Ross, that's the thing of orders, but I brought that to your attention last time, district attorney and district clerk, and now district, you know, now we increase, we're going to have those same increases in our office, just paying the attorney, in addition to the purchasing things that we've taken up. And I want to draw your attention too, to the fact that, you know, it might be, we write someone's pay, you know, we write such a certain mail, because at some point, there's only forty hours in the league, Ken's giving them more and more and more, and that's where my bad at this point, and that's why, because only part-time, not, not full-time. I don't know, never made it to full-time for today, only part-time. And if that person, you know, got a, so if you see me walking in my office with that wall, she will find, trying to figure out the measure, I think it's important to Ken at this time, that we get them, I like to hear from someone, and he writes that in
I think we were good with that part-time position increase, that's what I recall.
And we're also good, then, with Melissa Stevens making those adjustments within her office.
Yeah, did y'all understand that? She, she had a position, so given, given the amount to work with, which would be a fifteen hundred dollar increase, times however many people are in there, and this is somewhat unique, but she has a situation there where she felt like one particular individual was behind the times. You're giving her the ability to take that same fifteen hundred and reallocate it if she so chooses. That's a difficult thing to do, but if she wants to have that flexibility, and in light of the fact that we're actually authorizing a raise that exceeds what she had originally asked for.
And she started with that, she'll have to adjust it, but she, she didn't just bring that to my team, she worked on that, put it together, to make sure that she can work. So if you increase, it's going to be, you know, a few more cents per hour, it should be, I think, that, and bring anybody.
All right. To summarize, we've discussed payroll, salaries, et cetera, et cetera, and here's what I'm going to ask Barbara to do as she prepares the budget, an across-the-board raise of fifteen hundred dollars per year, per employee, a twelve hundred dollar across-the-board raise annually for elected officials, with the exception of Precinct Two Commissioner. The addition of a court coordinator plus benefits for the district court. The increase from part-time to full-time for the bailiff, who at this time is Woody Hughes. The flexibility, or the approving the raise to be applicable to Melissa Stevens' sister, and giving Melissa the freedom to allocate that fifteen hundred dollars per employee to some that may get a little more, some that may get a little bit less. The jail staff step pay positions increase by two thousand dollars annually. The mental health officer supplement remains the same. What did I leave off? Well, I mentioned the, the adjustment there, adding a court coordinator and adding up another layer to the part-time bailiff. So again, we're not, this is just what I'm asking Barbara to work into the new budget. We will approve this formally later on, but that will enable Barbara to crunch a lot of numbers as she spreads that out amongst all these different positions. All right, let's go back and pick up on miscellaneous items that we might still have left hanging, Barbara, and right now, I'm not thinking of any that we haven't already discussed.
I believe we already discussed all of them. There was a question about the city of Mount Pleasant, one commissioner asked me, is it fifty thousand dollars more than the current amount?
That is correct. That is correct. And this is, we had discussed this last year, that they, they extended our contract an additional two years with the agreement that there would be a nominal increase, if you call fifty thousand nominal, over the next couple of years. Next year, we will be talking this time of the year about renewal of that fire contract, and that will be a much more in-depth discussion. So my recommendation is the fifty thousand increase is reasonable. You've been hearing and will continue to hear this year about what's going on in the relationship between the Mount Pleasant Fire Department and the support for the fire departments that we have as volunteers. And so I will just hope that next year, we can work out a contract that is reasonable for both, and if we can't, then we discuss things like emergency service districts or county fire departments. But we'll at least kick that down the road for another year.
We also discussed, we'll come a decision on the emergency management department.
Yes, my recommendation was we go to fifteen hundred per month, is that right? Or was it eighteen hundred?
To thirteen hundred.
To, from fifteen hundred to eighteen hundred. And he had asked for that a couple of years ago. We granted a partial step up there. I'd like to see you complete that step up. I don't know, you know, you've got an extremely experienced person in this position, and I don't know that you'll always have that. I believe that this is warranted as Chief takes on more and more responsibilities, as his requirements are, you know, dealing with our volunteers. He does take a significant role there.
One other question I have, like, is I'm ready to raise this bar, part-time before the, do we want to allocate that by something about, by part, that would be something that I am.
I think if we don't do that, then we, there's another example of how we let positions get behind.
Yes, but I just wanted to bring that to your, the other thing is, we want to give this also to the party, tell them that it's in the, of.
It's a good question.
Now, if you don't hear, that's a question.
It's a good question.
I, I don't have any justification for not doing it.
I believe.
I thought that was just to give him, talking about employees of the counties.
Okay.
We all good?
I think it's fair to, to bring your, your full-time, you're right, and your part-time to, but that's a decision that we'll move back and then forward.
Just as a side note, we booked a meeting for Friday morning, two days from now, at ten AM, to open bids for the Justice Center. I have only talked to one contractor who has told me he will be submitting a bid. We'll have at least one, and hopefully we have some more. And at that time, whether we make a decision that morning or not, I don't know, but at least we'll open the bids and maybe can, if it's not clearly obvious, like if you just had one bidder or something, but if you have some there and they're close and you want to consider, we can appoint a committee with a made-up of some of us and some of the staff from the JP Courts to make that final decision. And we might even, could, could have those discussions that day, but either we're going to make a decision on that Thursday morning, or I will put that on the Monday agenda for a final vote, because we want to get this done as quick as possible. I will not be. want to get this done as quick as possible. I will not be here on Monday, and so if we don't make a decision on Thursday, I might on Friday, we can have further discussion on Monday or over the weekend, or that Thursday, or that Friday afternoon. But it would be great if we could make a decision on Monday at the Commissioners' Court meeting, or if not, within a few days after that. So I think in my absence, I'll probably have James prepare to post an agenda. I tell you what you could do, on Monday, you could, you could, you could reconvene, you could go, you could recess at the end of Monday's Commissioners' Court and pick back up on Tuesday morning. I'll still be gone, but you need additional time to decide that. Anyway, just a reminder to everybody, it's the 10 o'clock Friday meeting to open those bids. That is the deadline for turning them in. Okay, back to budget issues. Barbara?
I don't have any more questions at this time, Judge Lee.
Okay.
All of the ones you mentioned that come up.
Talking about the calendar. During this next month, we'll be waiting for the certified appraisal roll values, which are due by the, about the 20th to the 25th of the month of July. And between now and then, if Barbara has other issues come up that need our decisions, we will just, we will work those into our standard Commissioners' Court meetings, or we'll have additional budget meetings like this that will be posted in public. If there's nothing else to discuss today, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Fail to take advantage of this time, since we've got everybody here. Motion to adjourn made by Commissioner Applewhite. Second, Commissioner Parker. All in favor, say aye. All right, Barbara, get to work.